Yeah, I don't, I don't, um, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Then, um.
Should be one day.
Okay.
And then.
I didn't meet with fire.
Yeah, I know you're, I just got this video because I've taken all of these meetings. I'll be available.
Don't ambush me.
I know. I wasn't even looking for that one. Done with that.
Who's the guy with the penbar?
Is retiring. Did he have the same, uh?
Hello. Why didn't I like?
He, uh, it's funny.
No, I was, I was like, I'm not gonna say it. He took one guess and he missed. And I asked, he said him, and I was like, well, I don't have a comment.
It's funny. I went down to Jesus that Thursday, that weekend, because he works Thursday, Friday.
Yeah.
We figured here's Wally, and I'm like, I know.
What's he doing?
What's that? There's nothing to it.
I know. But he doesn't have any power.
He doesn't anymore.
He had it.
Chief P is told, he says, well, I expect you to don't fight with chief's permission when I retire. Sounds like you have all the answers.
Yeah. Good for him.
Went to someplace in Cross. So I went to, um, we live at Jamesville Cross, because we live in that place. So the youth club that is up there, you guys go to a tournament this weekend. They sent out the Jamesville Fire Chief, the Jamesville Indian President. Uh, yeah, the new friend.
Yeah, we're kayak.
You ready?
Are you?
Good evening. The time is now seven o'clock. And I would like to call the Boyte City Council meeting to order at this time. First order of business is roll call.
With the exception of Councilor Terrell, all councilors are present.
Thank you. Item two is pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand and join us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, please.
Special orders of the day and announcements. Three A is proclamation twenty twenty four zero three two, recognizing Roger Bryden in six oh eight day. Scott Bryden and Christine Bryden are here to accept.
And Councilor Day will present.
You guys can do whatever you want. You are standing. That's great.
I do.
Stand up.
It's working?
Yeah.
All right, welcome everybody. Thanks for coming to the meeting tonight. Okay, I'm gonna read to you as we're going here. You're gonna make me really nervous. I'm looking at you, but that's okay. We'll get started. That's okay. Wherever you'd like to stand, I'm good with it. Okay, here we go.
Okay.
Proclamation. Whereas area code six oh eight was assigned by the North American Numbering Plan Administrator in nineteen fifty five and was the third area code created in Wisconsin. And whereas six oh eight day is a date to celebrate and appreciate everything that makes our area special and unique. And whereas on June eighth of nineteen seventy eight, the city of Boyte proclaimed the date Bill Bryden Day, recognizing his philanthropy, famous smile, and goodwill. And whereas the current city council now recognizes the late Roger Bryden, who died ten years ago on June eighth, twenty fourteen, and who is also remembered by his business acumen, generosity, handshake, and smile. And whereas, uh, and whereas on June eighth or six oh eight day, the Bryden family and Bryden Motors will honor their family patriarchs with a community celebration at their downtown business commemorating both Bill and Roger Bryden. And whereas across the community, businesses are planning six oh eight day themed specials, discounts, and events. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Boyte hereby proclaims June eighth, twenty twenty four as six oh eight day and Roger Bryden Day in the city of Boyte and encourages residents to participate in the planned festivities, celebrating and remembering Roger Bryden and all the things local to the six oh eight area. Presented June third, twenty twenty four. Kevin Levy, council president.
Well, I'm honored and excited. This is such an amazing thing. I always thought when my grandpa had his day, um, that that was amazing. And, um, now it's come full circle with my dad getting the honor also. And, uh, I feel it's well deserved and obviously you do too. And I might wanna add that he helped to make riding with Bryden a household slogan in the area in six oh eight and far beyond. We get people from Florida and other states saying, hey, I got riding with, saw riding with Bryden in the parking lot or whatever. So, um, thank you very, very much. It's very much appreciated. And my sister Christine is here too.
Thank you.
Apparently didn't wanna say anything, but she's here. And my mom, Vicki, really did wanna come, but she couldn't make it tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three B, please.
Three B is proclamation twenty twenty four zero three three, recognizing Pride Month. Kevin Day will, Vice President Kevin Day will present to Lenny Benke from Yellow Brick Road.
Okay, before we get started, I hope you have a monster truck at your celebration like you did last time. That was really cool.
Uh, we're gonna have. We're gonna have drag race cars.
Yes, okay.
Come on down.
Hi. Okay, here we go. Whereas the city of Boyte supports the rights of every resident to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas we hereby, excuse me, we recognize that a fundamental strength of our society lies in our diversity. And whereas all people regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the city of Boyte is in the forefront of efforts to establish a caring compassionate community that is based on the inherent dignity of all its members. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for individuals in the city of Boyte who identify as LGBTQIA+ and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas the purpose of the commemorative month is to recognize the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had on history, society, and cultures worldwide. Therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Boyte hereby proclaims the month of June twenty twenty four as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Boyte and encourages community members to continue to raise awareness about discrimination and other barriers affecting employment, housing, public safety, policing, healthcare, education, and recognition of family relationships of LGBTQIA+ residents. Presented June third, twenty twenty four. Kevin Levy, council president.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. When we say pride, we're hoping to share that it's okay to be proud of who you are, no matter what, and it's okay to be your authentic self and be proud of that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item three C, please.
Proclamation twenty twenty four zero three one, recognizing Juneteenth celebration for the YWCA of Rock County. Vice President Kevin Day is gonna present to Amy Levy.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
How are you doing?
I'm lovely.
Good, good. Whereas in sixteen nineteen, a ship arrived in the British colony of Virginia bearing cargo of enslaved people from Africa. And whereas black people were brought and sold, bought and sold as slave labor for two hundred and fifty years and suffered unspeakable acts of violence. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January first, eighteen sixty three, freeing enslaved people in the South. However, many Southerner enslavers ignored that order. And whereas on June nineteenth of eighteen sixty five, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce the President's order, freeing enslaved people two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas other systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, mass incarceration, and anti-black violence continued throughout our country's history. And whereas Juneteenth is a day to reflect on both bondage and freedom. It is in equal measure a remembrance of enslavement and subrogation as well as celebration of the promise of a brighter morning to come. And whereas it continued efforts to build equitable communities, the city of Boyte joins with YWCA Rock County and other institutions and individuals who are committed to eliminating racism and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity to celebrate Juneteenth. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Boyte hereby recognizes Wednesday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty four, as Juneteenth Day and encourages residents, local businesses, educators, community, and faith-based organizations to celebrate diversity and advocate for the elimination of racism and to participate in events recognizing Juneteenth Day. Presented June third, twenty twenty four. Kevin Levy, council president. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the council for recognizing Juneteenth and the work that we do at YWCA Rock County year round. As many of you are aware, half of our mission is to eliminate racism. So I invite community members, not just in Boyte, but throughout Rock County. We are so excited to, to host a countywide celebration to join us on June fifteenth at Telfer Park from noon until eight. We'll have our opening session from noon until one, where we're so excited to have many community members participate. And Boyte native Monica L. Street Brown to serve as our keynote. So thank you so much.
Item three D, please.
Proclamation twenty twenty four zero three four, recognizing Juneteenth celebration for the Rising Queens. Vice President Day will present to Tracy Dumas.
Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation freeing all slaves on January first, eighteen sixty three. And whereas nearly two and a half years later, on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty five, Major General Robert Granger gained control of Galveston, Texas for the Union upon where he proclaimed that all slaves in the state were free. And whereas the anniversary of June nineteenth has come to be known as Juneteenth, a day for celebrating freedom from slavery and recognizing the importance, excuse me, of African-American resilience and perseverance. And whereas committed and concerned residents are dedicated to bringing our community together in a yearly celebration of acknowledgement to all our people are free. And whereas the city of Boyte stands for equity among all people and stands firmly against discrimination, abuse of power, and excessive use of force. And whereas Rising Queens celebrate and honors Juneteenth year each year in the city of Boyte in hopes of bringing people from all backgrounds together for this one-day observation of freedom to embrace each other's uniqueness and, and move forward from the wrongdoings of the past by representing our African-American culture through music, performing arts, food, and education in hopes of uniting our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Boyte does hereby recognize Wednesday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty four, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Boyte, encouraging residents to attend Juneteenth events scheduled for Saturday, June fifteenth, to celebrate freedom, honoring the end of slavery and remembering all the individuals are created equal. Presented this third day of June twenty twenty four. Kevin Levy, city council president. Thanks.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, on behalf of Rising Queens, we would just like to thank you all for inviting us out for the proclamation. Um, we just invite everybody to come out on Saturday, June fifteenth, at Jones Pavilion. Um, celebrate. We begin at ten and end at five. We have a huge lineup. And we, again, we just thank you.
And before we move forward into the meeting, um, this is a time that if individuals would like to leave, you can feel free to leave if you'd like to. Otherwise, if you wanna hang out for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Good night.
Mr. President, the tornado warning is going off, but it's in the northeast part of the county near Jamesville and Fort Atkinson. I just wanted to let people know that if they hear the sirens. It's not anywhere near Boyte.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item four is public hearings, and we have none. Item five is public comments.
We have reached the point on the agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form. Madam Clerk, were there any public comment forms submitted prior to the meeting?
There was. First up, we have Ross Miller.
What I'm here to talk about tonight, I'm here with Larry Wrestler, a friend of mine. We live up in Eagles Ridge subdivision. There's a lot of, like, trailers, campers. Most of them are in the driveways. Sometimes we got pictures. Sometimes they're, most of the time they're in the driveway. Sometimes they're just off. We have pictures of one house where they've got bikes and garbage cans of stuff shelved underneath of it. Basically, you'll see it in there. And then around behind the house, they got like, uh, wood and garbage of stuff piled up back there. And then the entryways, which New Leaf, I think is supposed to take care of that, but it's not being mowed or really taken care of like it should be. In fact, the one neighbor down the street, uh, on Turtle Town Road right there, a lot of times he'll mow that. It gets looking so bad. And I don't know what else, Larry.
Interview, we need you to come to the mic and state your name and.
It's the weeds and the brush that it's not being cleaned up by the homeowners association, which is New Leaf. Um, the only way we get it done is by calling code enforcement, and code enforcement calls New Leaf. And then two weeks later, they come out and they cut it. But you can never get it done unless you call every time.
Okay.
I also brought up this thing about stop signs out there.
Yeah, that's.
On Quail Run and Golden Eagle, they intersect with Eagle Ridge. They go through there about sixty miles an hour, actually about forty.
Yeah, I checked one. And that. Come off the one right in front of me and my wife the other day. He never slowed down or nothing. There's no signs or anything. So they think, boom, we can go. We were going like east-west, and he was going north-south.
Okay.
And there's no stop signs either way. It's just wide open. Whoever gets there first goes.
Yeah. And then we got the same problem on Hawks Pass and Golden Eagle. You can see that on the sheet that I.
Right.
I didn't make enough of them. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We can make copies.
We also have the trailers that were shown in the pictures with the garbage just piled around them. And the trailers that are, you know, look more like a trailer park than it does a nice-looking subdivision. I hate to see it this year go downhill. We also have somebody up there that likes to play the speakers on their motorcycles that are about six inches in diameter and about six of them on there. I'm four doors down with my windows shut, my doors shut. They vibrate the house.
Okay.
I've called the police department on it twice, and they're telling me there's no way that they can control this here because there's no ordinance on it. So I'm requesting that you make some type of ordinance that will read into the decimals meters, so you can turn around and measure what this is and only allow a certain amount of decimals from a residence.
Okay.
Somewhere in between like eight in the morning and ten o'clock at night. I mean, I don't see, you can't walk past there. If you got in your car and you're turning your speaker as high as it would go, how long can you sit in your car with that type of noise?
So we, if we, Jerry, if you could, uh, follow up with them on these issues. Now, did you need your pictures back? Did you want your pictures back?
Uh, no, you can have them if you like.
Okay, so if we can.
Or you can take pictures of them and.
What I'll do is give these to the city manager, and he can follow up with you.
Okay.
On what you, what you discussed.
I'd like to say something on the noise thing. He lives down the street from me on the other side of the street at the end. The person we're talking about where they live, I can go out on my deck and see their halls. I mean, it's, it's like you're in a, in a band inside my house. It's that loud. I mean, he don't let it go for two or three hours or nothing, but he, you know, maybe twenty, thirty minutes, sometimes longer. But all the time.
Okay. All right.
What he does, he's, he's working on his motorcycle. He builds them for show. And, uh, he's putting different speakers. I think he's trying them out. And he cranks it up. People right next to him, I don't even know how they deal with it. I don't know if they really complain or not.
Okay.
I'll make sure that Jerry gets these, and he'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have Priscilla Gustina.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this time. My name is Priscilla Gustina, a Boyte citizen. I'm here because I'm against the Jamongo, the Jamago Company LLC selling to the Northern Star Company sixteen forty-two Sixth Street to build the multi-unit housing complex that was rezoned by the city of Boyte City Council. And if you were, would consider, um, going back to the original rezoning and not rezoning it for multifamily, that would stop the lawsuit against the city of Boyte regarding your rezoning. Today, though, I'm here to talk about one reason why rents have and will be going up in Boyte. The, the page that you have on number one is what was submitted by the Northern Star Company. It was in your report. The date's there. I wanna just point out that I've underlined some of the data there, and apparently maybe some of that's been changed. But this is HUD, and the HUD says that for a family size of three, it shows that at fifty percent, thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollar income would qualify them to be able to get into a fifty, um, would get the rents for being in that category. If you're at sixty percent of the county median, you'd be at forty-six thousand six hundred twenty. If you look down below for a three, a three-bedroom size, you can see that at fifty percent, a person is having to pay, based on HUD and the maximum rents that Rock County says is one thousand one hundred twenty-two. And you were given these, this stat in January. Sixty percent says a three-bedroom would be fifteen hundred dollars. That's a lot of money for a three-bedroom, and that could be a three-bedroom house, three-bedroom apartment. Okay, turn over to the back. This is, um, information from Northern Star that, uh, is applying for five million dollars up at Milwaukee at the, the Wida, um, you know, company up there. So if you look, the address is the same, sixteen forty-two Sixth Street. This is what they're proposing. Look down, because I don't have, have much time. Look at where it says rents in the red, three bedrooms. Okay, so then on the far left, fifty percent, it says percentage of the county median income. So if they qualify in that front page for that fifty percent, they should be in the red over there paying nine hundred and sixty-six dollars for a three-bedroom. But they've got room to move up, you know, based on that front page. It says that HUD says that they could, you know, be making, that they would be able to qualify for eleven hundred and twenty-two dollars of rent paying that much. So there's room for Northern Star to increase their rents. Then you take a look at, at the top of this page, it says that, um, fifty-six affordable units will be less than sixty percent CMI. But yet they don't have anything under sixty percent in their graph. It says eighty percent. And so they're basically saying, I guess, I'm not even sure why the, the difference, but they're, the county says sixty percent, and others say eighty percent, thirty-two units will be at these prices. A three-bedroom will be, um.
Time.
Thirteen hundred and twenty-six dollars, a two-bedroom, twelve hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and a one-bedroom, one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. That's a lot of money. It's way above any of the rents we've ever charged in our life, and we've been renting for forty years. So what I'm telling you is that these rents that you represent and say this is okay, and you're gonna have these builders, the landlords are going to be able to charge this kind of money. And it's going to affect our whole community, all the landlords, including, I mean, if, if the Boyton, Boyte Housing Authority is getting these kind of rents, how is it fair that it's our taxpayer money that they're using to fund these programs? How fair is it that, that they can charge these kind of rents and we mom and pop areas that have been here forever don't charge these kind of rents? We're providing affordable housing. We are. Not these programs, and yet they make it sound like it. So basically, and there's a typo at the bottom, because it says in yellow, only eighteen units. I took that from the front page because I got confused. I guess it's supposed to be twenty-four units will actually be affordable. The rest of them are the fifty and the eighty percent. Look at those rents. They are way out of line, and they're not affordable. But you're saying they are. We should be getting more rent money. So I'm, I'm afraid that this will be affecting the citizens of Boyte, and they need to know this. It's not just the landlords. It's you guys, and I've been in it for forty years. I know. Section eight, what they pay does affect the city of Boyte. Please reconsider rezoning.
Thank you.
Pam Devoe.
Hello, thank you for your time. I just moved to this area, and I live on White Avenue, right off on the corner of White and Dewey. Seems to be a speedway. The, when you're coming from Walmart from the freeway, when you get around that curve, there, there's a sign right there. Plane is day, speed limit is twenty-five. It even has a little blinky that tells you how fast you're going. Yet there's not a week gone by since I've been here, since we bought our home in October, that there's not a wreck, literally either at one corner or the other corner of our house. Every single week. The speed coming through there is absolutely ridiculous. I, I, I don't know, again, I just moved here, so I don't know how things work here. I, I don't know if there can be more signs put up. We just live, obviously, right up from the fire station, not too far from the police station. We hear them constantly, so I know they're busy. And I know that's lower on the list, and I get it, that there is more important things than that. But just since I've been here, I have also buried and called, um, animal control. I've held two dogs and three cats in my lap as they died because they got hit and they landed up in my front yard. One hit, was hit so hard, it hit my car in the driveway. I, I don't know, like, if there's anything we can do to, like, post more signs, anything to slow it down. I, I don't know what else to do. And then the second thing is the. I, I don't know what else to do. And then the second thing is the trucks. I get it, it's a truck route. My husband's a trucker. Engine braking is not supposed to be allowed in city limits. If we do put up a sign that says no engine braking allowed, it is against the law for that trucker to hit his Jake brake. And there are several that come through and I yell at them. I, I'm a very voice-stress person. I will sit out on my porch and I yell at those truckers. I mean, you, you can see my husband's tractor when, when he's home for the two days every couple of weeks that he's there. The park's right, you know. And it is not necessary. Engine braking is for one thing and one thing only, and that is when you are on a hill and you are at 40,000 pounds in your, on your tractor, your trailer. It is not to be used in the city and it's definitely not to be used in a residential area. And that one comes through every single day and he'll see me standing there and when you turn it on in the truck, all you gotta do is let, let your foot off the gas pedal and it pops that on. And he'll do it purposely. He'll go boop, 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 knowing that I'm standing there. I mean, I, I don't know what we could do as a city or if there's anything I could do more in the neighborhood to help. I'm obviously loud and proud and I will be out in my yard, you know.
I'll have, uh.
Thank you for everyone's time.
And I'll have you, the, the city manager follow up and get your information before you leave.
Up next we have Steve Holland.
Steve Holland, Beloit. A recent IQ report indicated that for 2023, Beloit had the worst air quality in the country for regional cities. We can all certainly be sensitive about the bad press that Beloit so often receives. The city responded by indicating the limitations of the report. One of those limitations is the fact that so few areas are monitored. Most of the counties in Wisconsin have no EPA monitoring. As more data comes in, I'm sure that Beloit will lose its title as worst in the country. Also, rather than using the more familiar US EPA Air Quality Index, which factors in several different kinds of pollutants, the report focused only on particulate matter 2.5. That's particles that are 2.5 microns in diameter. It would take about 30 of those lined up side by side to equal the width of a human hair or 10,000 lined up to equal an inch. Further, the World Health Organization's safe standard of five micrograms of such particles per cubic meter of air is referenced compared to the EPA's safe standard of nine micrograms, which means that we were only about 50% above the safe level instead of three times above the level the World Health Organization would assign us. So how much of this stuff can we safely breathe? We don't know for sure. However, that doesn't mean we don't need to address the problem. We only had two months of the 12 in the safe zone of the EPA rating and zero months in the World Health Organization rating. Discounting the months with extreme elevated readings during the Canadian wildfires still leaves us with a problem. We can't control the air the winds bring to Beloit, although we can lobby for monitoring to identify the sources of pollution in that air and for mitigation efforts at those sources. But we can control our responses, especially to extreme events. We can identify and create safe indoor areas for children and youth for learning and recreation during dangerous air quality readings. Bringing together the Y, the Schools, Beloit College Boys and Girls Club, Rising Tide, Parks and Rec Board, Community Action, and any others to work a solution. Install indoor monitors in each site to assure reasonable air quality levels, coordinate staffing and volunteers, and incentivize or subsidize the purchase of home air purifiers for our most vulnerable. Let's have Beloit's reputation be the city that saw our problem and addressed it appropriately. Thank you.
That was all that was submitted.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that did not sign up that we should address the council this evening? If so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Lori Marshall, Beloit. Hello, council members. I am here again to state my opposition to the housing development on Sixth Street and the application for our tax dollars by Northern Star Companies to make money off of our neighborhood. I have gone over their application as well as you and we all know contrary to what they say, they stand to make some good money. It's not for their love of the city or their previously unseen tax credit field location. It's not just from the goodness of their hearts. We see how well they take care of it now and have no reason to believe that there will be any change in the behavior in the future. We have also seen that they have an impeccable memory of things that never happened and were never said. You have three developments happening now. Let this one go somewhere else, a better spot with no opposition to it. Why does everyone insist that the only way to help people is to keep them in low-income rental housing? You know what would be truly groundbreaking of you all and helpful to the people that need it? Be pioneers and support a developer that would build rent-to-own houses for low, lower workforce income families that would rather own their house instead of rent in perpetuity. Why not fight for that to help the people falling through the cracks who have no subsidy help? Not 225 and $300,000 homes being built now that are out of reach for most and would likely tax people out of them anyway. Help them get their own piece of paradise to call their own. Those houses would fit perfectly in that small Sixth Street lot that you all insist must be taken away from our neighborhood. What a renegade Beloit would be by investing in that form of workforce housing development. Give young people and families the help and knowledge to navigate homeownership instead of living a life of low-income housing developments. Help people break the cycle of public housing. You are keeping them down instead of truly helping them. We all know what happens with these developments in the end. The people you say you want to help end up in the same place they started in or sometimes worse. Don't keep throwing taxpayer dollars at something that only helps in the short term and keeps people in the low-income renting housing cycle. You are starting to create a city of haves and have-nots. Help people up instead of keeping them down in renting. Who is going to make up the tax base for all these developments for the next 20 to 30 years? Current property taxpayers? The elderly who are already are stretched so thin that many worried they will not be able to stay in their houses? People are leaving this city and school district in droves for the township and outlying towns. Help the elderly and current homeowners stay in their homes instead of driving them out due to large and only increasing property taxes. Someone help them for once. Be leaders and help all of us in the city, not just a select few. We all work and worked hard for what we have. Be brave and deny this development on Sixth Street. Show other cities how to be innovative and bring low-income rent-to-own housings to Beloit citizens. There's got to be a way, find it. There's got to be someone out there that really wants to help them, find them. Just because we regular citizens do not work for the city, serve on committees, or belong to certain organizations does not mean that we should be thought of as less than or not as important as others. We should all have a say in what happens to our tax dollars and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted by email?
There was.
So please read at this time.
In the era of climate change, I'm disappointed to see the city selling off fully wooded acreage on the outskirts of the city to be bulldozed and turned into single-family homes when we have such, so much empty space within the city that can be built on as well as agricultural land outside the city that is already cleared of trees. With climate change, temperatures will rise disproportionately here in the upper Midwest compared to other parts of the country. We should be preserving the mature woodland we already have to alleviate the heat island effects that our paved and developed cities create. Please preserve the wild spaces as community parks and encourage building on what has already been disturbed for human use. Sincerely, Jenny Hopel.
Thank you. Were there any other comments?
That was it.
Seeing none, public comment is closed at this time. Item six, please.
Item six is consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any, like, any council, like, anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items six A through six E. Is there a motion to approve?
I saw move.
Motion by Blakely, is there a second? Second by Forback, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, passes. Item seven, please.
Licenses, there are none. Item eight is ordinances. Eight A is consideration of ordinance number 3838 annexing 2221 Milwaukee Road from the town of Turtle to the city of Beloit.
Julie.
Evan Bittner has submitted a petition for direct annexation of 2221 Milwaukee Road from the town of Turtle to the city of Beloit. The applicant's requesting approval to annex property he owns in order to get septic. So it's connected to sewer, sorry. This parcel is contiguous to the city of Beloit. Plan Commission reviewed this at their May 22 meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request for the annexation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to lay this over? Motion by Forback, is there a second? Second by Dench, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of laying this over, say aye. Any opposed, hearing none, we will lay that order over. Item nine, please.
Item nine is appointments. The individuals named below have been nominated for a seat on a city board committee or commission. Each nomination is subject to confirmation by the city council. Approval of appointment will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
And do we have any appointments this evening? Their names?
You had the meeting earlier from Brandon Buchanan for Police and Fire Commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I saw move.
Motion by Blakely, is there a second? Second by Forback, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
Welcome aboard.
Item 10 is councillor activities and upcoming events.
Councillor Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Saturday, I spoke at a listening session that was hosted at the library by a group called ECHO, Engaging Communities to Change Health Outcomes, which is a cohort of Rock County. The group has selected housing as, because it plays such a major role in our community's ability to remain healthy. You can go to their website to learn more about them and how the group supports civic engagement. So you would go to E C C H O W I dot org. Other speakers that day, and there, there were quite a few speakers from really worthwhile community organizations. State Senator Mark Spritzer was there, Kendra Roman of Covenant Care Counseling Center. Anyway, I was happy to be a part of it and learn more about this group and I hope we will all be hearing more from him, from them rather, as time goes on. Secondly, also on June 1st, I went to the 65th Annual Beloit in Vicinity Art Show over at the Wright Museum of Art at Beloit College. The exhibits are open through July 20th and the museum hours are Tuesdays through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Wright Museum is located on the corner of Bushnell and Prospect Streets on the south side of the Beloit College campus and it is free and open to the public. So this is a chance to see some very fine artwork for the next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Dama.
I'm not doing anything too specific, but I would remind everyone, I can't find the date for it, but Rock the Pride is coming up. Also, Happy Pride Month to everyone celebrating. Also, good reminder that Beloit's Five Bar Hostes Drag Bingo every now and then and that we have amazing LGBTQIA+ organizations in the city that have been doing a lot of work for a long time. Beloit's actually a pretty good HUD for things like that and it's amazing dynamic individuals. Also, Happy early Juneteenth. Make sure you support the city in their efforts to partner with other organizations hosting events for that as well. I think Beloit is a really awesome place that does a good job in these cultural times of having good events and utilizing our public spaces and partnerships. So I definitely think you should go support that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Day.
Thank you. I would, I just want to thank staff, DPW, Police and Fire for a successful Memorial Day Parade. So it was a safe and fun event for everyone, families, veterans, et cetera. So thank you for that. You guys did a great job. And then also just to remind you of the Sky Carpenter in town this week. So if you get a chance, get out there and take in a ballgame. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Forback.
Yes, I did have the opportunity to attend our SLATS meeting. SLATS is a meeting of the people who are concerned about any kind of transportation in our area. And if, I know that so often people say, well, if only people would work together. Well, I'll tell you, these people are working together. They're multi counties, multi-cities, townships, et cetera, and everybody's there. Everybody's letting each other know what's going on, when the federal dollars are coming through because always any kind of repair or new kind of ways of, of, that we can transport ourselves, whether it's by car, walking, biking. We, these things are extraordinarily expensive, so we get state and federal monies to help us. I just want to pass on that you'd be proud of the people who are there representing the various entities. So I'm, I always learn a lot when I'm there. The second thing I just want to mention is I had the great opportunity to go to CASA's lunch fundraiser. CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate and these are volunteers who work to help kids who have been, through no fault of their own, taken away from a dangerous home environment. And often what happens is with education and help, sometimes those kids can go back. But you can't have a child in a dangerous home life. We just can't allow that in our communities. And sometimes these are people who have fallen with, and with drugs, et cetera. But I'm, just want to say that there are wonderful, wonderful volunteers in Rock County working to help our kids and it just does you good. And they gave out some prizes at that lunch and I'm telling you, when you talk about the volunteer of the year, she was awarded, because she had done so many extra things for her teenage girl that she was helping. Again, you have no other duty when you are a CASA volunteer than just absolutely concentrating on seeing how you can help this child who has gone through a lot of trauma. My husband and I had the wonderful opportunity to do this several years ago with a whole family of four darling boys. And I'm telling you, we sure got more out of it than we gave. So I, kudos to the good people who are fighting the good fight. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dench.
Uh, nothing this evening.
Thank you. And I would just like to say, echo what Councillor Day said about the departments and the parade and everyone that participated in it. I always appreciate that and they're, they're looking out for everyone's safety. So I think a lot of times we maybe take some of that stuff for granted. So I just want to thank all the departments for everything that they've done. Also, thank to the city staff for everything that you do each and every day. It is greatly appreciated. But I also want to give special recognition and support to our Beloit Police Department who over the last few weeks have been going through some very tough situations and have still remained professional. I mean, I think it's often times that a lot of us may not understand when we see them riding down the street or even the fire department, that when they're going to fires or police are going to the calls, how dangerous that could be for them. I mean, a lot of times we just call them and they, and they show up. So I just wanted to say to the police department that. to the police department that, you know, we support you for everything that you've gone through. Realize it's been a couple tough weeks, and I always tell people when they complain, I say, come up with a solution as well, but don't always look at the end result. There's always a beginning to the reason why police and fire are someplace. So I still, people, look at the whole picture instead of just the end result. So kudos to the police department. I'll just let them know to hang in there. We appreciate what they're doing. So I just wanted to share that with the police, so if you could take that back to your staff, we greatly appreciate it. And with that, it ends our councillor activities and upcoming events. Item 11, please.
City manager presentation.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Item 12.
Reports from boards and city officers. 12 A, the city council may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, Wisconsin statute, to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, namely to discuss the possible sale of 3,500 Eagles Ridge Drive. The council will not be reconvening into open session.
Is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion by Forback, is there a second? Second by Dama, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? At this time, we are heading to closed session.